Okay, well, let's get rolling on our pre-meeting agenda if we could. Mr. City Manager, the impact fee final report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilor. Good evening. We had the opportunity to hear from our consultants who whether or not impact fees made sense for our community. And they are here that particular question and that discussion. And so with that, if I may, Mr. Mayor, turn the time over to Liz and her team. I'd appreciate it.
Yes, please. Ms. Becker.
Stand again, Mayor, Council. This is Beth with Casper Area and MPO. So Casper requested this study as part of our fiscal year 22 UPWP. We just completed it. Impact fees keep coming up in the long range transportation plan. It was mentioned. It was mentioned in Casper's comprehensive plan. So Casper requested this study from us, as you're all aware, we're 92% federal, but the entity is putting back in 8%. But we have Elliot Solsky here from SHU. They were our consultants on this project. He also came in January and met with, during a coffee talk with all of our developers and interested community members and gather information from city staff. So I'm going to turn it over to Elliot really quick and have him go through what we found.
Sure, welcome. So I think we were looking for about a 10 or 15 minute agenda item. I wanted to go over strictly the background of the study, our study process for the last eight months or so. Kind of real quick, impact fee basis 101 for those who aren't as familiar with it as others. And then the study conclusion. So the, there was a study to look at potential impact fees in, I think it was 2004, a few years ago. City Council at the time opted not to adopt them. And the idea of looking again at the in the city comprehensive plan and again in the, in the regional connecting crossroads long range transportation plan. There was acknowledgement that it had been looked at before and that there were some sort of challenges or concerns about competitiveness. But the recommendation was that it was ripe to look at it again. So so as Beth mentioned, a grant from FHWA and the through the MPO to do a feasibility study. The scope is only for the city of Casper, not for the region, and it's only focused on transportation, other potential fees. So it's a focus study. Wanted to kind of start on the impact fee 101. Whether you do impact fees or the method that you're doing now to, to get contributions from developers for roads. In all cases, developers are responsible for, for their own roads, for internal development, specific roads, turn lane into a development, that sort of thing. Whether you have impact fees or not, that's always going to be the responsibility of developers. But there's two ways to, to look at funding for citywide and regional connections on the major roadway system. What you do now is is that citywide and regional roads are funded by the city and you negotiate on a case-by-case basis contributions from developers towards, towards roads that are adjacent or that are kind of vital to the access for those developments. The impact fees would replace that, that second thing, that, that case-by-case contribution. And it would be a standard fee that would be applied to, to numbers of trips or to vehicle miles of travel generated by the development with a standardized equation. And the, the fee would be used for road expansion that's caused by development, caused by growth. So new roads, widened roads, new multimodal, multimodal systems, not for maintenance or reconstruction. It's got to be, got to have a nexus to that development. So we started in November. We had a, we had a project team that met bi-weekly, so we can be a 12, 13 meetings throughout the last eight months or so from the planning and public works and the MPO. We came in for, as Beth mentioned, our coffee talk and a day of talking with a lot of senior staff and, and real estate folks and some few public officials, appointed officials at that coffee talk session. Took a nice tour of the area and kind of know the system a little bit. And then we finished the draft report that we submitted and the project team reviewed. And it's up on, I believe, is it the city or MPO or both websites?
Yeah.
As of last week. Quick definition of impact fees. Again, it's a one charge on new development to create capital costs. And it's got to be proportionate to the impact of the development. So, so it's applied to new development, not to, to existing development. It's got to be spent in, for improvements that serve growth. So again, it's capacity expansion. That's, that's got a relationship to growth. It's got to be spent within a reasonable period of time, which the ordinance would kind of lay out what that timeframe is. And it's got to be improvements that have a community benefit, again, as opposed to being just simply for one development, which has every ability. Cannot be spent on maintenance operations to improve for existing deficiencies. It's got to be growth related. Okay, so why do a lot of communities go to impact fees to replace that case-by-case kind of exact methodology? We kind of sum up in five, five reasons why it might be advantageous. It's become a pretty popular popular mechanism around the country in a lot of places. Equity. Equity meaning if, if two equivalent developments come in, one happens to come in in a place where they're across the street from a development that's happened and their road system's all set. They can come in, not spend any money on roads. Same exact equivalent development if they're in a place where roads have not been improved in necessary fashion, then they might have to pay a lot of, a lot of money. So it's, it could be equitable in terms of kind of comparable developments, paying comparable fees. Predictability, that there's, there's a schedule, you have a certain number of dollars per trip that you generate per square foot, per unit, so you know what your fees are going to be in advance. Flexibility, this will be for the city. You have some revenue that comes in, you have some money, and then you can spend it not necessarily exactly on what we're, in the order of the development, but in a way that's kind of a logical manner for, for your developing the city's roadway system, transportation system. Timing, it's typically assessed at the building permit stage, which is advantageous if there's a really large development that's you know, many years in the making. Some other methods require you to pay all the money upfront. But if you're at the building permit stage, a phase development can be, you can assess it over time. And streamlining, it could be easier for the city to administer as opposed to that case-by-case. I won't dwell on this too much, but there, there are general methods to calculate fees. And there's, there's mix and match and combinations thereof, permutation. But basically, there's, the two ways are plan-based. If you have a very defined set of plans, if you have a recent transportation plan, you know exactly what your, what your projects are and you have a pretty good sense of what the growth is, is expecting. You can kind of divide the, the bust of the project you want by the growth and you come up with your fee. It's fairly straightforward and well-refined. The other way to do it is consumption-based. There are a lot of different names for it. It's a more generic, kind of what's the average cost to, to accommodate a new vehicle trip or a new vehicle mile of travel. What's the, the kind of average cost? And then you apply that to your development. The second one was selected as the, as the most appropriate for Casper. The main reason being that the conditions for that plan-based, you don't really have a recent transportation plan that lays out a series of thank you, that lays out a series of projects. So, so the consumption-based, more generic was the more appropriate. Study conclusions. We concluded, and this is based on our own assessment, on discussion with the project team, on the coffee talk and the, and the community sentiment at the time. We think that transportation impact fees are a very promising method and revenue source that might make sense at some point. But we don't think, we don't think it makes sense right now for a couple of reasons. Fairly moderate growth is expected and the moderate growth that generates fairly moderate revenues. And with moderate revenues, it would take a long time to develop enough funds to do a lot of, you know, kind of really noticeable things. Again, the lack of the lack of the transportation expansion plan and a lack of precedence in Wyoming. There aren't that many examples, so it would be a little you'd want to really make sure that, that it makes sense right now. Circumstances that could change and be more conducive for future impact fee implementation. If there were, if you were in a higher growth mode, if there's another energy boom or whatever factors might cause higher growth boom, then some of those kind of challenges would go away. If there was a defined transportation plan. We think that a broader impact fee program might make sense. And there's a lot of discussion about this at the coffee talk that if you're going to do the leap into the new system, maybe you'd want to do it with police and fire and open space and some other things and have a kind of broader program if you're going to go through those hurdles. And similarly, regional approach, perhaps it would make more sense to do it not just with the city, but also with the Toronto County and, and your neighbors to capture more growth and more projects that are kind of inter-theristically.
Any questions? Mr. Gammel.
Thanks, Bruce. Thank you for the presentation. I was curious, I think I already know the answer. This is a presentation from MPO, so maybe that's why it's restricted to potential for a transportation impact fee program. But I'm curious if we as a city are, you know, the broader impact fee program. I'm interested in regional because anything that city Casper is going to be leaning on as far as like a growth and development is going to impact all of our surrounding municipalities. So I'm curious, why, why was this study restricted just to transportation and not broader impact?
So Mayor, that is correct because MPO funds are for transportation projects. We can't look at broader things like parks, open spaces, recreations or anything like that. Just restricted transportation.
That's said, since that's one of your recommendations, I'm interested in that. I was just passed an article last week. Washington City, Utah is building a $10 million bike and skate recreation complex. And they're using their impact fees to build it. So I'm, I'm curious what a broader impact fee program looks like, what the revenue potential is for it, just out, you know, outside of just transportation-related. I'm interested in what potential I could bring because Washington City, Utah has a smaller budget than you. They're building this, you know, if you look at the pictures or videos of it, it's called Wheels Park. And it's, it looks like it's going to be an amazing asset to that community. So something I'd love to explore in the future, personally.
Very fortunately for Washington City, they, they get to draw from the 300,000 people in St. George, which is right on their border and then Salt Lake's up very carefully. Anyway, are there any other questions or discussion? I want to thank you very much for your, for your time.
Thank you.
Beth, thank you. Sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Financials for the 1% community projects.
Yes, sir. That's right. And this was a follow-up request, if you will, from the council pertaining to some requests that we had from our community partners or to our community partners, I should say. And those who had failed to submit their financials as part of their application
Right.
for one cent money. And so the request of the council was, could we bring this back to an agenda, touch-based, and see if in fact the information that was provided was satisfactory or if council saw the need to make any changes pursuant to the information that was provided. So if I can turn some real brief time over to Flur to report to you in that effort.
Yes.
We will take your direction thereafter.
Very good.
Council, we had three organizations that did not turn in their budget or fill out the budget sheets in the application. That was Hope House, Central Women Counseling Center and the Casper Family Connections. And we reached out to all of them and they turned it all in. And so that was in your pre-meeting packet for your review. So it was all completed as far as we can tell. If there's any changes you want to make or there's any other things you would like us to request. If not, we do have it scheduled for resolution today to allocate those funds, reserve those funds for the organizations as you all allocated previously.
And if I'm correct, Council, I believe we said as long as their financials were in, that the awards that we had given were appropriate. We were good to go with that. Does everybody else see that the same way? So the resolution should not be an issue at this point. Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am. Mr. City Manager, Kaufman Avenue Improvements.
Mr. Mayor, Councilors, this is a project discussion that I wanted to bring your attention as it relates to the situation that we're seeing wherein projects are coming in over budget. However, we are interested in moving forward with respect to that, you know, to said project. You'll see another project here later that will include one of the fire stations where we will have a similar recommendation. But, you know, in that regard, we want to give opportunity to ask any quest, answer, I should say, any question that you might have pertaining to that status of being over budget, but yet still trying to move forward. Kaufman Avenue Improvements is one of those scenarios. And indeed, we, we do have the recommendation that we'd like to move forward despite the fact that it is over budget and ostensibly one of those projects that, that still need to see completed. And so with that, I've asked the public services team to be prepared for any questions that you might have in concert with that recommendation to continue on this, on this project.
I do have a question. It was in our packet, but can you remind me what the, what the estimated over cost is?
The, the margin, Mr. Mayor, is in the neighborhood of $600,000 that we did not budget for. And so we've got a series of recommendations where we draw those funds from in order to make the project happen still.
So you are fairly comfortable that we've got the money to proceed and get it done. Is what you're telling me.
I do. And however, if, if council has consternation, which I'm sure you do, we would understand that and certainly go a different direction if you see that.
Do you have any questions or discussion on Kaufman Avenue, folks? Mr. G. Gentlemen.
I appreciate you.
Absolutely. Well, it, it doesn't seem like there's the consternation you were looking for.
I didn't. I'm grateful, Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Kathy.
I do have one question. Did they break it down compared to our budget versus what the bid was? How much of that ovaries was in materials versus how much of that was in their construction labor, so to speak?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor, that's a great question. I would have to punt, however, to Cindy and her team to help us address that, if that's okay. Thank you.
Ms. Cindy. We could save you the walk if you'd like to just stand there. It's only a work session.
Great.
Or a pre, pre-meeting.
I did talk to Alex about this before it came down and he has not broken it out like that, Counselor. But he can and he will for you and he'll break that all down. So I will have him do that for you.
But I think that's a fair question. $600,000 is a lot of money.
It is.
And especially when we have various due people for putting these packets together, that's a lot of money. My guess is a lot of it's going to be material overrun, but it would be comforting to know that if that in fact is true. And I'm assuming that's where you were.
That's, I know where I was. Yeah, if two-thirds of it's material and a third of it may be in labor. And I know if fuel costs would be up, some of those types of things, then that stands to reason and that basically it's out of contractors' control, so to speak.
Agreed. Is that something that's on for consent tonight? Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor was just looking at that to be doubly sure. Do you know the answer to that, Cindy?
It is on.
It is on.
It is.
Okay, it is. Where my guess is, we're going to either want to remove it or we're going to want to have that information before this council moves forward with that information. Bruce, believe.
And Mr. Mayor, that, that certainly is something that I would suggest if council would like pursuant to a decision. I would ask that we maybe table it till the next meeting and instead of, you know, voting no, if you will.
Right. Is that going to
Famously.
do anything to the project overall by delaying it two weeks? Are we, are we okay doing such a thing? Okay, good. All right. Well, then I guess we'll prepare an amendment for that particular resolution during that time. If, if that's comfortable.
So, Mr. Mayor, what I would recommend then is that we probably ought to consider a motion that removes that from consent, that particular item. And then gives you the opportunity to open discussion, at which point an amendment to table or at least postpone for a date certain would be in order.
Mr. Kathy, would you be interested in making that motion at the meeting tonight?
More than happy to.
Very good.
At which point in the meeting?
When we get to the consent resolution.
Okay, once she's read them all, then I make the motion to remove that item from the consent agenda. That's what I was interested in was the
Then we'll have discussion and then you'll have to make an amendment to set it for a date certain, which would be a two week.
Yes.
Okay, very good. And Cindy, in the meantime, I'm assuming you can get that information to us. Okay, thank you.
Point of clarification, we're just, you can't have open up discussions. Right? That's why I just wanted, I just, yeah. That's Mayor, so that's probably the reason. Okay, and so it would be heard and then there can be
And there could be a discussion on that, correct?
Right, correct.
Now, do we do that discussion right then or do we go ahead and vote on consent and then come back to that?
Yeah, we can do it right then. I think that would be the easiest.
Not a problem.
Easy peasy. All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, very good. Thank you. Appreciate that. And thank you, Counselor. Okay, Mr. City Manager, agenda review.
Mr. Mayor, I don't really have anything else to add for the review portion tonight. Certainly council is aware that we're covering two budget items, if you will. We have the amendment for fiscal year 23, which is your current budget year. And then, of course, we're hoping to pass fiscal year 24 tonight and, and move into the new fiscal year.
And that will require a unanimous vote since we are three councils short, so.
So we can have one no vote.
Well, we can have one no. That's true. So Steve, you can have your no if you want to. I'm just kidding. All right, let's adjourn the, this meeting and we'll reconvene here in about two minutes. Give people a chance to stretch their legs, go in the restroom and we'll get fired up if that's Okay.
Bingo. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, before we begin, begin this evening, I'd like to remind everyone to silence their cell phones. Council meetings are live streamed on City's YouTube channel. I now call the June twentieth, two thousand twenty-three regular council meeting to order. Chair would entertain a motion to, by minute action, excuse the absence of Counselor Pollock, Counselor Haskins, and Counselor Inga Bredson.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Bond, seconded by Counselor Kathy. All voting aye?
Aye.
Any voting nay? Please record the vote.
All counselors voting aye, the motion passed.
Please, uh, let's join Counselor Kathy in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the minutes of the June sixth, two thousand twenty-three regular council meeting as published in the Casper Star Tribune on June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Kathy, seconded by Vice Mayor Pacheco. Any amendments? Any abstentions or nay votes? All voting aye?
Aye.
Please record the vote.
All counselors voting aye, the motion passed.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the minutes of the June sixth, two thousand twenty-three executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Kathy, seconded by Vice Mayor Pacheco. Any amendments? Any abstentions or nay votes? All voting aye?
Aye.
Please record the vote.
All counselors voting aye, the motion passed.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the June twentieth, two thousand twenty-three bills and claims as audited by City Manager Napier.
Oh, moved.
Moved by Counselor Gamroth, seconded by Counselor Bond. Any abstentions or nay votes? All voting aye?
Aye.
Please record the votes.
All counselors voting aye, the motion passed.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, now's the time we invite anyone in the audience who wishes to speak with the council to come forward. The portion of this meeting is dedicated to the public to allow you time to voice your concerns. Therefore, council will take communications under advisement, but if they choose to respond, they will do so at a later time. Please state your name, direct all questions and comments to the mayor and only the mayor. No personal obscenities or threats will be tolerated. Council will not respond to personnel matter matters. These will be referred to our city manager. Council chooses to address these matters, it will be done during the introductions of measures and proposals by the council. Presentations will be limited to five minutes. No time extensions will be permitted. Please note that public hearings and ordinances each have their own comment period. Please hold your comments on those particular items until we reach them. Is there anyone that wishes to address council this evening? Please come forward, sir. Good evening to you and please state your name.
Good evening, Mayor. I'm in Hoover. I had recent surgeries, so I'm very well prepared. But I've had trouble with the city pastor destroying my private property and my roadway into my property, which is in the county. Immigrant Trail off the Ryan Stock Trail. Uh, started in again a couple of weeks ago under foreign concrete trail down through the park. They have no legal access into the park. They have legal access. They can drive in from the event center or whatever. They can't drive heavy equipment down through there. And even going down the river. Any, any Larks truck, dump truck, fire trucks, anything good stuff are a good chance of. I understand. Now, they've been using immigrant trail to access the park twenty-five years. Twenty years. I give them verbal permission. First of all, they come out and never ask permission. Cross my property, they just come out with a front end loader or something, smash my gates. Clear out my fences and cross my property to get into the park. Uh, hundreds of photos and videos. Uh, that you with me today. And when they, you know, they raised the promise to repair the driveway, which is a, it's a public access roadway. But they never have. Twenty years, they never did. Uh, I did talk to the city manager five years ago and he just one small section, uh, right in front of my property, immigrant trail into my property lot. I never did want to stop them from getting to their park and doing whatever they had to do. But they pounded that drive, they just destroyed the driveway. We have a lake there now that we named it Ryan Lake. And I would say they poured fifteen hundred feet of concrete recently and lowered that hole like eight inches. Now they're going for twenty-five hundred feet of concrete. I think they started today, which trucks going up and down the river. Five years ago, I had enough. Actually, I rock him out and power out. Thirty-five foot into my property, put in a powerful, going to install a thirty-foot wide gate, thirty feet high for their heavy equipment on my property. Well, I talked to city manager and Andrew Beamer, and he did take it back out again. It cost taxpayers over fourteen thousand dollars for them to rock him out in the power. Um, the only two properties they can cross to get to the park. That's mine and the lander now is. Right now, Lander now is giving them permission to go all the way down to the river, come up over hill, come back up. Where they need to get down the river. He's also, for five years, he's been compensated for everything he's done, I guess. Put in two driveways for him, fresh gravel, base. He hauled his Russian Alex off. They repaired his fences. They destroyed all my fences and gates. I never, I had to repair them all. And I had to, a picture took for it later, the driveway. Twenty years ago, even, put it back in that. I just don't understand how the city can come out and destroy, uh, a roadway county. And we're like, well, we'll fix it up a little bit when we leave. I said never have done, but now there are problems meaning that again. So when this first started, I called the city manager's office. And they actually asked me if I would give them a way of easement over the top of mine. I thought, well, might consider that, but wouldn't do you any good because you still have to cross my property. Although they made an offer to buy my property and buy the acres.
Sir, your time is up. Only give five minutes. I'm sorry. I'm assuming you're well aware of this situation.
Mr. Mayor, uh, the last time I visited with the gentleman at the, at the, at the speaker, uh, was five or six years ago, as he referenced, and that's been the last time.
I would, uh, urge you to reach out to our city manager, see if you could find resolution. And if you do not at that time, I would urge you to come back to this council. That's, we're out of time, so that's, that's my recommendation for you, would be to reach out to our city manager's office. Uh, have a discussion with Mr. Napier, and, uh, the city is quite amenable. I'm, I'm assuming you'll find the resolution you're looking for. Okay, I thank you for your time. Yes, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to council this evening? Okay, we will move on. We found it. I now declare the public hearing open for consideration of the Third Amendment to the current budget for fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty twenty-three. Mr. City Manager, do you have any exhibits?
Mayor, I.
Uh, Mr. City Attorney, I'm sorry, excuse me.
Thank you. Exhibit number one corresponds from Jill Johnson to Jay Carter Napier dated June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Exhibit number two affidavit publication is published in the Casper Star Tribune dated June twelfth, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, now do you have a report, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I do. Uh, Counselors, this is the opportunity that we have, uh, which is pretty consistent with each fiscal year that we, uh, encounter at this time of the year to, uh, put together some final changes as it relates to the current budget, uh, particularly if we're going into the new budget, which you'll be considering this evening as well, and, uh, and, and bring a lot of those, uh, realities of what we didn't anticipate a year ago, uh, that have come into much clearer focus at this point in time. As we discussed in work session, uh, last week, um, we were talking about a twenty-three million dollar adjustment. The vast lion's share of this in regard to transfers and so forth that we needed to make pertaining to aligning the appropriate revenues with the appropriate funds, as well as putting the funds together for projects that council has authorized and, uh, and requested. And so with that, Mr. Mayor, uh, with regard to any questions that you or the public might have, that's the purpose of our gathering this evening.
Very good. Council will now listen to public comment. Public hearing comments are limited to five minutes. No duplication of speakers will be allowed. Is there anyone who wishes to address the, uh, Third Amendment to the current budget? Okay, very good. Uh, this time I would ask those, oh, I guess there is no one to speak. So there being no one to speak for or against the budget amendment number three, I declare the public hearing closed. Uh, the chair would entertain a motion to, by resolution, amend the current budget for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, Third Amendment to the original adopted budget.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Gamroth.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Bond. Now, we may have discussion. Any questions concerning the twenty-three million dollar amendment? No? Okay, very good. Any amendments? All right, any abstentions or nay votes? Very good. All voting aye?
Aye.
Please record the vote.
All counselors voting aye, the motion passed.
You. Now declare the public hearing open for consideration of making appropriations of funds for fiscal year twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, I do. Uh, exhibit number one, correspondence from Jill Johnson to Jay Carter Napier dated June eighth, twenty twenty-three. Exhibit number two affidavit of publication as published in the Casper Star Tribune dated June twelfth, twenty twenty-three.
I thank you. Mr. City Manager, do you have a report?
I do, Mr. Mayor. Counselors, thank you. Um, this is the opportunity where council gets to determine on a formal basis, uh, the passage of the budget for fiscal year twenty-four. Indeed, we are talking about a one hundred and ninety-seven million dollar budget that encompasses not just the general fund, but all of your enterprises and capital uh, items that you would like to have happen over the next year. Uh, certainly council is aware that, uh, this budget includes a forty-six million dollar capital agenda also. Uh, I, I would also direct your attention to the financial consideration portion of your, of your memo that suggests, uh, while we have a one hundred and ninety-seven million dollar budget, there is a one hundred and eighty-three million dollar revenue portfolio that we're proposing as well. That imbalance, however, should, or perceived imbalance should not bother you in that you're aware that a number of the things we're doing is with regard to money that we have on hand and would ostensibly be counted as a, as a revenue per se. Whereas we also have a number of transfers that look and feel like a, a revenue, even though these two are dollars that we have on hand and need to be put into the appropriate fund in order to deploy with regard to a number of projects that we have proposed over the next twelve months. Uh, I would like council to be aware and be mindful, as well as your, your public, that indeed you are being presented with a balanced budget. You're being presented with a budget, and my recommendation, that is, uh, in existence within the means that are prescribed by, uh, the, the, uh, conservative projection for revenue that we see over the next year. I would also suggest that with the passage of this budget, we in some cases are actually strengthening reserves as well. Like so, uh, in my estimation, a lot of the important things that, that folks look for when it comes to reasonable and responsible governance is being had within this proposed budget that's in front of you this evening. And so with that, Mr. Mayor, I would certainly open up to any questions that you might have or that indeed, uh, your public might have.
And I do believe that it, uh, it seems like a rather large budget, but if I remember correctly, it's only three percent. Uh, the budget was increased three percent, and then inflationary time, that's, that's, uh, pretty remarkable.
Mr. Mayor, I would say, uh, that from an operational standpoint, we are seeing a four percent increase over last year, over, over the revised budget from last year. Um, the majority of any increases that you're seeing are in the heels of projects we're trying to get done over the next twelve months.
At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish, uh, excuse me, council will now listen to public comment. Public hearing comments are limited to five minutes and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. Is there anyone who wishes to speak, uh, to the new, uh, fiscal budget? All right, there being no one to speak for or against making appropriation of funds for fiscal year twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four, I now declare the public hearing closed. Chair would entertain a motion to, by resolution, make appropriations of funds to cover expenditures of the city of Casper, Wyoming for the fiscal year of July one, two thousand twenty-three to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four.
So moved.
Moved by Vice Mayor Pacheco, seconded by Counselor Jensen. Discussion. Yes, sir.
Don't everybody panic? I just wanted, I just wanted to give a big thank you to all of the people in the city, staff, everybody for working. everybody for working diligently on putting this budget together to make it a well-rounded with a lot of the capital improvements to improve our infrastructure. As Mr. Gamroth has pointed out, we have increased our funding for streets. So hopefully, we can get some of our streets that have badly needed repairs. That is part of that extra capital funds that are going in this budget year. So again, I want to thank everybody that worked on putting this budget together within the city staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. And to piggyback on what Counselor Kathy said, it's, it's a daunting task when you are trying to present a balanced budget to the tune of a one-hundred-and-ninety-seven million dollars. And to our city manager's credit, balancing all the, the department heads and them bringing their needs and their desires to you as well. Jill and our finance office, it's just been a real neat experience to be part of. And I as well appreciate the hard work that goes into this. There's, there's nothing easy about it. We're gonna, we're gonna get plenty of backlash, as we always do during budget times. But this is a balanced budget with a very modest raise considering inflation where it's at. I'd say we're doing, doing a very good job. I'd say the city financially is in a very good spot. We're also gonna have a banner year for, I mean, we are, this is, I believe, the largest amount of money we've ever put into our road situation. It's still not enough. I could tell you the five million dollars per year, little over, that we're putting into our roads. It will take us from a grade of fifty-nine to, at the end of four years, of twenty-two million dollars. We will still be at a fifty-nine. We have a forty million dollar shortfall in our stormwater, which has become quite prevalent to anyone who's been in the Collins Ash Street area after these recent rains. We had a tremendous amount of additional funds that were required for snow removal to keep our city moving after this horrible winter. And we even had to employ some private contractor help, which cost the city greatly. But those are, those are all things that go, go into these budget situations to make life better for our constituents. I know we also subsidize our water, our sewer, our trash. We pay some of the lowest water, sewer, and trash rates in the country, right here in Casper, Wyoming. We are very fortunate to live where we do. We've got great minds at work and, like Mr. Kathy said, thank you all for the hard work that you put in and the job that you did for this budget. It's never easy, so thank you, thank you. Is there anyone else who has anything? All right, any amendments? Any abstentions or nay votes? Okay, all voting aye?
Aye.
Please record the vote.
All counselors voting aye, the motion passes.
Please, second reading on National Electrical Code, please read the ordinance on second reading by title only.
Ordinance amending sections one-five-point-two-eight-point-zero-one-zero, one-five-point-two-eight-point-zero-four-zero, one-five-point-two-eight-point-one-seven-zero, one-five-point-two-eight-point-three-zero-zero, one-five-point-two-eight-point-three-seven-zero, and one-five-point-two-eight-point-four-four-zero of the Casper Municipal Code and adopting the twenty-twenty-three NFPA seventy National Electrical Code.
Thank you. Chair would entertain a motion to approve on second reading, the ordinance just read.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Gamroth, seconded by Counselor Kathy. Council will now listen to public comment. Public comments are limited to five minutes and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. Is there anyone wishing to speak on the NEC? Okay, any discussion amongst us? I would tell you, we had some contention in the beginning. And I think that once the public realized that if we don't pass this, we give state control over, over everything within our city. We haven't had any more, any more discussion involved in it. So with that said, any amendments? Okay, very good. Any abstentions or nay votes? Okay, all voting aye?
Aye.
Please record the vote.
All counselors voting aye, the motion passes.
Second reading, the LAD one-sixty Chinook Trail, please read the ordinance on second reading by title only.
Creating City of Casper, Wyoming Local Assessment District Number One-Sixty, here and after help the district. Ordering the construction of improvements therein, prescribing the same, directing the preparation of plans and specifications therefore. Providing for the publication of notice to contractors. Fixing the boundaries of said district, ratifying actions previously taken, and prescribing details in connection with said district.
Thank you, Amanda. The chair would entertain a motion to approve on second reading, the ordinance just read.
So moved. Second.
Moved by the Vice Mayor Pacheco, seconded by Counselor Gamroth. Council will now listen to public comment. Public comments are limited to five minutes and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on the Local Assessment District One-Sixty Chinook Trail? Any discussion? This is a rather unique one. This is one that was brought to us by those folks. So those are always, always nice when that happens. Any amendments? Okay, any abstentions or nay votes? All voting aye?
Aye.
Please record the vote.
All counselors voting aye, the motion passes.
You? Let's move on to consent resolutions, please, Amanda.
Eight A one, ratifying a mayor's signature and approving amendment number one to the memorandum of understanding between the Board of Commissioners of Converge County Wagon, the Board of Commissioners of Nettona County, Wyoming, the City of Douglas, Wyoming, the City of Casper, Wyoming, the Town of Evansville, Wyoming, the Town of Barnum, Wyoming, the Town of Glen Rock, Wyoming, the City of Mills, Wyoming, and the Town of Rolling Hills, Wyoming, for impact assistance funds. Eight A two, authorizing an agreement with Installation and Service Company Incorporated for the Mayor of Posa Boulevard Improvement Saratoga Road to Brookview Drive Project. Eight A three, authorizing submission of an application to the Wyoming Department of Transportation for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four transportation alternatives program funding for the Wyoming Boulevard Side Path Phase One. Eight A four, authorizing submission of an application to the Wyoming Department of Transportation for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four transportation alternatives program funding for the Wyoming Boulevard Side Path Phase Two. Eight A five, allocating optional one percent number seventeen sales tax special project funds for use by local nonprofit. Eight A six, authorizing professional services contract between the City of Casper and Converge One Incorporated for blade server hardware installation and configuration at City Hall. Eight A seven, initiating a request for the de-annexation of a nineteen-acre, more or less parcel of city-owned property from the City of Mills. Eight A eight, canceling the regularly scheduled city council meeting set for July four, twenty twenty-three, and rescheduling it to July fifth, twenty twenty-three. Eight A nine, authorizing an amendment to the passenger bus agreement between the City of Casper and Fifty-One Fifty Tourism Development Incorporated. Eight A ten, authorizing a facility running agreement with Enforcer Group Unlimited LLC for use of the Casper ice arena. Eight A eleven, authorizing amendment to the procurement of goods agreement with United States Welding Incorporated, doing business as Rocky Mountain Air Solutions for supplying liquid oxygen for use at the water treatment plant. Eight A twelve, authorizing an agreement with Great Western Insulations Incorporated for the twenty-twenty-three Parks Playground and Jordans Project. Eight A thirteen, authorizing an agreement with JTL Group, doing business as Night River for the Kaufman Avenue Improvement side ridge to West Twenty-Fifth Street Project. Eight A fourteen, authorizing the levying of Eight Mills Property Tax by the Nettona County Assessor on behalf of the City of Casper. And eight A fifteen, authorizing a license agreement with Zio Group LLC to install buried fiber optic cable infrastructure within city right-of-way property.
Thank you, Amanda. Council now consider consent resolutions. Oh, excuse me.
Mr. Mayor.
Chair, hang on just a moment. Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the consent items just read now.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to move the item A, item eight A thirteen, the Kaufman Avenue Improvements from tonight's agenda to a date certain, which would be the next regularly scheduled meeting, which ostensibly will be July fifth.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to move Kaufman Avenue Improvements. Second. Seconded, seconded by Counselor Gamroth. All in favor of that move?
Aye.
Okay. Do you need to record that? Okay, please record the vote.
With all counselors voting aye, the motion passes.
Okay. The chair would entertain a motion to adopt the rest of the consent agenda, agenda items that were read.
So moved.
By Counselor Kathy, seconded by Counselor Gamroth. Mr. City Manager, would you like to comment on any of these items?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. I will just make a quick comment on the one that we moved, is simply waiting on some more information for the counselors. And it'll come right back in two weeks. So, any abstentions or nay votes? All voting aye?
Aye.
Please record the vote.
All counselors voting aye, the motion passes.
Thank you. Please read the consent minute action titles.
Nine A one, rejecting all bids received for the East Twenty-first Street Improvements Kingbury Drive to Wall Stride Project. Nine A two, rejecting all bids received for the purchase of city-owned land located at Robertson Road and Treditt Lane pursuant to Wyoming State Statute fifteen dash one dash one twelve A. Nine A three, authorizing the discharge of two-hundred-and-three-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars and fifty-five cents of uncollectible accounts receivable balances. Nine A four, authorizing establishment of a direct distribution fund. And nine A five, ratifying resolution number twenty-three dash one-seventeen for the declaration of a disaster and emergency for Casper, Wyoming due to flooding.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent minute action agenda items just read.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Bond, seconded by Counselor Jensen. Any abstentions or nay votes? All voting aye?
Aye.
Please record the vote.
With all counselors voting aye, the motion passes.
Thank you. This time, we ask counselors to bring forward relevant concerns or items of interest. Mr. Bond?
Nothing really, just, yeah, Nickfest was a big success, you know, bar huge success. I think I, I did have some conversation with some city staff about, I was approached by a constituent about replacement of, of some of the walking and bike paths with concrete as opposed to asphalt and, and so the runners are not happy, but, but I think we have some alternatives for the, for the runner perhaps that, that will be okay, so. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, sir. Counselor Kathy?
My Chamber of Commerce meeting was canceled this afternoon. I did make the Joint Powers Water Board meeting earlier today. And it looks like the Water Board is going to pass a rate increase on their wholesale water rates to the municipalities. So that will be coming up shortly.
Sir?
Beyond that, my son's married and I should be here for the next few months, so.
Well, congratulations.
We will go from there.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Jensen?
The municipal band is scheduled to play tomorrow, the, or twenty-second, because that's more Thursday. That was right. It's every Thursday night is the municipal band plays over at Washington Park at seven-thirty. So it's a free concert, so think about that when you guys are looking for something to do on Thursday night. And they did have a lot of flooding over there at Washington Park, but I'm hoping that it's all dry by the time Thursday rolls around. Which is good, so keep that in mind. Also, I know that there's a lot of Casperites out there enjoying this beautiful weather today. A lot of them multitask, you know, and I just appreciate that for their interest in the city council meeting. So a lot of them are, you know, doing their activities, maybe they got their earbuds in and they're listening to what our city is doing. So it's always nice to, to know that people are, that care about the city and that they're listening. The other thing is, is the National Historic Trail Center has a big event coming up this Saturday up there. It's a free event and it's had a lot of different cowboys coming to town, some big names, Ken Rollins, Andy Nelson, Red Hill, Dave Munzick. So it's a free event and have some key kids programs happening up there, so check it out, it's very free.
Thank you. Counselor Gamroth?
Last Thursday, I had a strategic planning for the Downtown Development Authority, lasted all day. It was a really great session. We established kind of vision and priorities for the Downtown Development Authority moving forward. Solutions, how to best sustain David Street Station, which folks should know is funded entirely by private donors and sponsorships. City contributes nothing to it. It's, you know, all privately raised, and so just how to best sustain that venue into the future. Lots of great ideas for potential future projects to be taken on by the DDA, potential for, you know, ordinance changes if that's within the appetite. So really good, broad meeting, covered lots of topics. So looking forward to kind of detailing some of those. We've talked about it in strategic planning, now we're gonna start kind of implementing them. And so looking forward to talking about more of those in the future. Unfortunately, I missed my Casper Housing Authority meeting because it took place the same day, but I did attend the Father's Day event at Washington Park on Saturday, which they hold every year. It is dry. It was a really nice event, also free. They do burgers and dogs for everyone in the community, tons of playable slides. It was just a really good event, really good turnout, and so if that's something you've not attended, I would encourage you to catch it next year. It's always a, a really good, well-attended event. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Pacheco?
Nothing tonight.
Nothing tonight. I just have a couple of things. CNFR broke records again this year after having a record year last year. The stands were, it was awesome. And those cowboys and cowgirls put on a heck of a show that was very enjoyable to be a part of. Joint Powers Water Board meeting today, they did, they will be raising wholesale water rates. It's, it works out to be about eight cents per thousand gallons. That comes on the heels of a roof that has been completely damaged on one of their largest tanks. And it's a one-and-a-half million dollar fix, unfortunately. But it's a lot cheaper to replace the roof than the entire tank because structurally the tank is okay. So there are times when things like this happen. We were only slated to have actually no raise at all in our water rates. But unfortunately, when things like this happen, we have to pay for them. So Rock the Block, I was reading today before I came in, has canceled for the foreseeable future due to some funding issues. So my wife and I did attend one, I think, two or three weeks ago, and there were, there had to have been a thousand people there. So what a bummer that we've again lost it, but that, that thing seems to be a juggling act. It's on, it's off, it's on, it's off. So unfortunately, but fortunately, for those of you that love music and like going to that on Thursday night, Ms. Jensen just offered you an alternative to music on Thursday nights in Washington Park. So maybe you can just scoot on down there with your family and enjoy that. Happy Father's Day to all you dads, as Father's Day was just on Sunday. And it's always well-deserving. Kyle, Ray, and Mr. Bond, and Mr. Kathy, both of you, all of you. My poor father is, is long gone, so I didn't get to, to do that with him, but I did have my good years with him, so. I think that's all I have. So thank you all. A notice of an executive session to take place at this date and during this meeting was given. We have matters to discuss regarding litigation and personnel, therefore, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session. And at the conclusion of that executive session, to reconvene this regular meeting solely for purposes of adjournment of this regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Kathy, seconded by Vice Mayor Pacheco. There are a majority of counselors present, and a motion to adjourn into an executive session has been moved and seconded. This motion expires two-thirds of the majority of the council presence. If there's any abstentions or nay votes? All voting aye?
Aye.
Please record the vote. Thank you. A greater than two-thirds majority of the council present voted in favor of the motion. We are hereby adjourned into executive session. Thank you all for coming.